Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome you all to the planning commission meeting of September seventh, two thousand four five. My name is from a character from the commission going by in my lap. Mr. Mark Jackson, Mr. Mr. Mark Jackson, Steve Hurst, Sandy Left, uh, the deacons. Vice chairman Harry the same is my right. It can enjoy us these folks volunteers supported by the mayor and the city council, you know, you join me and thank you for your work and time on behalf of our city. The way the meeting run tonight is all for reading the items on the agenda into the record. We'll hear from staff and any recommendation they have, and we'll hear from the applicant. There will be anyone who's supportive of the application, and then we'll hear from anyone that may have concerns about the application. Then we'll let the applicant respond to any concerns we've brought up in final comments. After that, we'll close the public hearing and commission members who discuss, make comments and make motions. If if you have a phone, I'd ask you to turn it off or file it. If you get up to speak tonight, I ask you to come to the podium, tell us who you are, if you're representing someone, who you represent and where you reside. Mr. Morgan, will you introduce any staff numbers? I see Mr. Martin there, which is always the hat.
Yes, Josh Martin from the mayor's office is here with us. I'm Christopher Morgan, planning manager at the city. We have Philip Overcash, senior planner in the department, Amanda Cox, our planner who works with you all on a daily basis. Molly Connor, our annexation plan, Anna Hart, our senior zoning planner. And then our clerk, Desmond O'Neil. Also tonight, you'll have a presentation from Jason Bro, our STR czar, as he says, but but we'll say he's our STR coordinator. And that's their city staff.
Great, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and read the first item on the agenda, some minutes by sixteen. Mr. Jacobs, I think you had some corrections or concerns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I looked over the minutes because I did attend this meeting and on the zoning item number two, I believe the minutes state that it was a unanimous approval. But Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey refused himself from that vote. So there was only seven members that voted on that item. And we should reflect that, especially not, especially a refusal.
And you have a break.
That was only when I noticed.
You didn't bond any others, I know they're red.
Okay, so I'll move to approve with that correction that's critical, but at least no, he refused.
Second one is the same.
You know, why don't I for approval, because she wasn't at the meeting.
So I wasn't.
No, she wasn't.
I was.
She wasn't, she wasn't.
I was, I was here.
You were one of the candidates, commission.
Yes, I wasn't, that's what I was there, that's why I didn't.
Jacob, for staying just seconds.
That was July second, not the special.
All in favor, the motion, sign off, saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So six in favor and one of ten, you weren't at meetings, is that right?
I think not.
Okay, great, thanks. So six in favor and I oppose at that, and it's for approval, that correction. B is medical overlay, district overlay update staff.
And this was a follow up to your discussion of the medical district overlay at last month's meeting and your vote on it that you were promised an update. Mr. Martin is here to do that. And then he will also have a quick update for you all after that and after any questions on that about the affordable housing initiative that you all had been wanting some allowances.
Talk about this.
Oh, it has for. I should say, if you have a phone or an iPad. So that's good, I appreciate it. Thank you for, you know, I think, and I appreciate commissioners, you know, asking for some feedback and then what that comes to. First, we say several people have given their thing to then put how we can do things better. So we appreciate it and I appreciate going and just rest in it. Mr. Martin, sure.
Um, thank you all very much. Good evening, commissioners and to the republic here tonight, I'm going to kind of go. I'll probably a little bit more swift this evening, but than last time to that, for everyone to sleep. But I wanted to start off by kind of where we've been since we came here last. And the meeting that we've had was recently was on September tenth, which was a workshop and listening session that we. Uh, we're going to have at the new space at one oh eight Meeting Street, the new office space, but it turned out to be too small for the number of attendees that showed up. So we moved to city council chambers and and did that meeting. And so I'll start there, but first in the packet, I think Philip maybe emailed these out Friday night. Uh, there were three documents that we sent out. One was a red line version of the ordinance based online, the comments. One was a clean version of that in front of you. And the other one was the document that probably put you to sleep, the thirty three page document where I basically put together every comment that we've received to date. From every organization, planning commission, public comments, all the interest groups, neighborhood groups, those types of things. Uh, with a comment and then a detailed response and then how the new ordinance was attempting to address that where applicable. Um, you know, for example, a lot of the comments that we've received revolve around flooding. And those are more kind of more policy issues around like infrastructure and capital projects that we're working on. So we didn't really get into a lot of those types of comments. It's really strictly about the overlay, although we do give some flavor to just kind of like Calhoun West or certain projects that are coming online as part of that. So so this document is probably the most important piece of where we've been since we last met. Um, that again, has all of the comments that we received to date. Uh, and trying not to be repetitive, when I got into the public comments, they're starting to get pretty repetitive. And so these are kind of all mutually exclusive comments, not, you know, repetitions within the within the set. So with that being said, I'll just go through kind of generally the items that we that we did change and kind of scrolling through this. To the the uses, as you remember, we had seven kind of zoning considerations that we were looking at. And the uses for the overlay are still basically the same approach to lift the hours of operation restriction. Uh, to allow sidewalk cafes and dormitories, that was another use that we had found as part of this, and then the day to day centers. And so those were all permitted uses. And then by the height area setback regulations, remember again, the LB was more of a suburban condition. We removed all of that to get those to more of those conditions that are, you know, more downtown Charleston. So that's that's number one. Number two, uh, this was out. So that was that. So there were two of the parking standards. We talked a little bit about this. And one of the things that we wanted to, we heard from people is that they wanted to have the medical university continue their commitment to what is the largest park and ride system downtown, which is the off campus system. And they are taking right now, you know, a number of about forty five hundred car trips a day coming into downtown. And so that commitment is echoed within this alongside the relief of parking standards. So as you know, our parking standards don't legitimize the parking that's provided in West Ashley, for example, to a certain use. So they can't count their for their parking. And also if the parking spaces on campus are four hundred and one feet or greater, then away from the use that they're serving, they don't park. Uh, they don't count for that parking, which triggers a variance. So what we're trying to do is in the spirit of comprehensive, getting campus wide parking and counting it campus wide and not having a specific use by use requirement. And then also being able to for them to count the off campus, off peninsula, parking ride lot, which is a huge benefit to downtown, both from a neighborhood standpoint, street parking and 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 the traffic. So I think everyone was, um, moving toward that. So we we've updated that section to reflect those provisions. And that is. That is if we're looking at this, we're looking at the. Section three, four, three seventeen, this is the leave. And. Yes. That is on the site, that's section F, okay. And then the next one. Had to do with. Support of the architectural purview, purview. Uh, here we've had some conversations since we came to you with regards to the buildings. So we have the list of kind of the significant buildings that are in the table, the two tables that are in the overlay. Uh, that would require review by the VAR for any demolition, alteration, or new construction on the site. The relief was that the there were insignificant buildings on site that the VAR would not be reviewing the demolition of those structures. They would be reviewing any alterations to existing structure or new construction to the structures themselves, new construction on those lots. Um, and so that that has not changed, but what has been provided is some additional information on the buildings of the insignificance. Um, that were given to some of the the interest groups that were interested in that, as well as. In terms of how we looked at bringing in the documentation of all the demolished structures, whether they're under purview or not. And Eric, that that was one of the comments, I think you had accurate consistency throughout the document, which we've also addressed that uh, in terms of getting the official name of the Peninsula Medical University Overlay District, MD Overlay Zone. So that's the official now name, and we've gone back and changed all the maps and the applications and all those types of things. So we're we we scrubbed that up and said, thank you for that. But we required the demolition and how we document all those demolitions, whether or not they're under the purview of the area or not. So it's on file with the city, um, moving forward. So that was that was the next one. Stormwater standards, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of confusion about stormwater standards and and, uh, you know. Probably TRC review is not everyone's dinnertime conversation, but um, but I'm going to kind of, I'm going to kind of put out. We cleared this up, I think, by making kind of statements of absolute within the overlay. So there was a lot of, uh, comment about you're bypassing the TRC process, not the case. So we've stated in here that the TRC process and all the storm understanders, those all apply to any development or redevelopment within the area period. The the point that caused some confusion is this concept of third party stormwater review. And right now, when you go to TRC, if Harry goes to TRC and Erica goes to TRC, Harry goes in and he said, I'm going to go with the city stormwater review staff. And I'm going to go down that path. That path may take a long time just because of the backup and the backlog of TRC. When Erica goes in, she sees what Harry just did, she's like, I think I'm going to get a third party stormwater reviewer to help me do my plan set. The city has approved these three contractors and the stormwater approvers that are here today, that Erica or Harry or Charlie could choose to get. But once you go out of the line, you still come back in at the end for the final TRC review and approval by staff. The only thing this may do is it may, it may save Erica three months that Harry had to go through. And so there's some, there's a time saving, we're trying to get where if you wanted to pay for your expedited review, you could do that, but it still is going to be certified by staff. What this does is it says that the MUSC, if they want to have a third party stormwater reviewer, they have to do the fourth contract uh, for the stormwater reviewers. And that's because the three that are on file today are backed up and very busy. So if they wanted to have one, they would go through the city, the city would approve the contractor. It would become the fourth on file stormwater review contractor. And then they would pay and reimburse all the costs associated with that to the city, still goes back to the TRC review, still subject to all the same standards as if you're in the city line or you're in the third party line. All that's the same, it all comes back to the same point where Erica and Harry would meet to get an approval from the TRC. Does that help?
Yeah, because I don't think that was clear.
Yeah, it wasn't. I, and it, it's, it's complicated to begin with, so I'm just trying to boil it down to, you know, personalize it when you're in a line and you're in a line, you know, that kind of thing. So that was not clear. And so we, at the end of that, at the end of that section, just to make sure that there was, there was confusion, you know, adding language about the fact that, uh, you know, the the technical review process applies to all development and redevelopment in the MD overlays. And and that includes all the stormwater standards, all the stormwater compliance and such. So that has kind of been clarified and reworded a little bit, just to make sure, to provide a little bit of clarity in that section, which is the the last section of the overlay, which is section N. Good.
One question, is this option going to be available generically across the board with any development?
It is today.
It is.
It is today, but the thing is, is we only have three contracts.
They could pick their own and you could get them approved.
So if you wanted to go through the line, you said they could pick the third party and then you'd meet Harry and Erica at the end of the line. Two.
You waved at me while I was still standing in there.
Yeah.
So I know that we were not going to add additional TMS numbers to the proposed ordinance. So.
We still have the Courtney Drive outstanding issue.
Yes, okay, clock. Who knows how many other people will walk, raise their hands.
Right, so that's because we had already gone through a formal process. We had said that this was going to be MUSC related properties of ownership or, um, you know, derivative thereof, because they hold real estate in various ways. Um, but we we know which one are the MUSC related. And then of course, approval was not included because of the fact that it's not MUSC related property.
Okay, okay.
And you can always amend an overlay if you need to and add it. But but I think there's certain things that are kind of unique to MUSC in this overlay. So I'm not sure how applicable to non-MUSC entities it will be. It may be that their issues can be addressed through other means, such as that one on Courtney. I think their big interest, I'm guessing, was a hotel, so they may have to pursue that in a different fashion.
Well, and we did, one of the parcels show up at the workshop, it's in full disclosure, that was still wanted to be in this process. And the mayor moderated that workshop at city hall and said that, you know, we'll consider you after we get through this process.
And I guess I'm not thinking about it from the individual standpoint of the individual property owner. I guess I'm thinking about it from the standpoint of, we understand that MUSC has these parcels, right?
That's right.
But at in the grand scheme, in the long run, in those, in the ten, five, twenty year span of this, there's also the ability for them to acquire. And so looking at the way we've treated the accommodations overlay prior to its amendment, you know, people are comfortable with one, people are comfortable with two, people are comfortable with three. And then after the fourth one, people start to get a little uncomfortable, right? And so I think the question I was, I was really trying to raise was, when you, when you start seeing the, 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 when companies want to be added into it may become, it will become dicier down the line.
And that'll be part of your decision process.
I was not going to, I'm going to be sitting here, being a lot of somewhere.
Uh, planning commissioner retirement, yeah, BAR planning commissioner. You're this big devil alumni. Um, the, uh, so, so I think that there are two things. One are the private property owners and then there're the MUSC of the future properties. Um, and so again, both of those would go through the same process. It'd be a formal rezoning to amend either one of those into this overlay or maybe it's a, you know, next to the medical MD overlays. I'm just making this up, but you know, maybe something else, but that's, that would have to still go through a form.
Okay.
Okay, yes. Anything, anything else? So I like that, okay. So the height districts, real quick, uh, just to clarification, we had height that's being added in these areas. And we've had a lot of confusion about this idea about, uh, what, how we have liner height districts around the edge of our blocks and what that looks like visually. So if you look at this, that is the fifty five thirty S height around, and that's, that's hugging the edges of Calhoun. Um, and Rutledge, right? And we're moving through up into the block, then we get to eighty five feet. And then the very center of the block would be the two hundred, two fifty. Uh, so it's set back a hundred feet, so that the width of that yellow liner is a hundred feet in depth, all the way around the block. So what that looks like is this, is basically where you have a long, you know, such a street like Calhoun, you would have a fifty five foot building, step back a hundred feet, and then you go up, whether it's eighty five feet, eighty feet, two hundred feet, what have you. Um, and so that's the, this is also referred to as like the wedding cake approach, but this is the the step back and setback heights that are, that are planned for this. And so that's, that has not changed. The accommodations overlay zone, and Charlie, I promised him really quick, the last few, the last few things. The accommodations overlay zone, there was a lot of, uh, desire to have sections of fifty four two twenty put into overlay. So fifty four two twenty has the qualifications of thou shall not displace office use, thou shall not displace residential use. So, you know, we went through that whole big, oh, I, you know, count how many hotel rooms and the office space is leaving. So we took that language and put that in here for the overlay so that that could be part of the process. Uh, and the room count and the number of uses hasn't changed. Tree protection and landscape and buffer, this is pretty important. So we had a lot of, uh, concern about tree protection and landscape buffer standards. And what we've done is we said that for all the significant properties in that table, with the kind of the historic properties and other properties on campus, those for tree removal have to go to BZASD. So we reversed our position on that. On the rest of the campus where we have those future growth areas, they don't have to go to BZASD, but we're going to, we're going to hold them for a higher standard. They're going to have to do one to one mitigation, regardless of the size of trees, regardless of that. And then they're going to be qualified by the type of tree that they have to mitigate. So they be canopy, they be on campus, they be at the street. Um, we worked with Eric Schultz and some language on that, but we, there's no one to one anywhere in the city of this. So we we increased the, we made the standard more strict for when there was a lack of review of the BZASD. So, and then finally, that's it. So here's where we are. Uh, next week, this is scheduled to go before city council. Uh, the dates are on this, uh, the twenty third, uh, this next week, we're a public hearing. Uh, and we will go for her freedom public hearing. This is the second public hearing because you're, you have the first one. And then we'll go, if that all works out well, then we'd be at the October fourteenth, uh, city council meeting for second file.
And we appreciate, I know I, the commission member Sean was thanking you and the mayor. Yeah, sure. Going through this, taking the time, having the people, having the input session.
Sure.
I think that was all very important. While this isn't a public hearing, the fact that we had it on the agenda, I want to ask if anyone would like to make any, have any comments on this?
I guess I will.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We, yeah, we're not voting on anything at the public game, but I, since we put it on the agenda, I want to let you come up with it.
I understand, thank you very much. First of all, I'm Joe McGee with the Austin Boys Association, and we want to say thanks as well to the mayor and to Josh and and Mr. Morgan as well for kind of allowing for additional input. Um, some issues still remain unresolved from our perspective. The the two sixty one Calhoun property, which is on the south side of Calhoun, uh, the Hudson Village opposes the extension of the overlay to that. And I, there's some questions that will follow with Mr. Martin, but we want to, you know, it's a conflict between the zoning orders and what LB uses. And we certainly would want prefer it not be extended, you know. Number two, we want to make certain of the users or the hours of operation comply with LB zoning, which is a current zoning, seven to eleven. It's currently five stories, we prefer it not be five stories. There are adjacent properties that are residential in nature, some rented, some still residential. And I think for just scale and mass to be better, something lesser than five stories. So that was one issue. Um, the other issue is that we raised is, and I think it's a fair consideration for all of us when something of this size comes up. The issue of traffic, that this whole area is not without some traffic, if you get out of town on a, any kind of day of the week. And the the whole, the, there's not been a lot of consideration around traffic. The argument is it'll come up in the TRC review process. And that's good, something of this scale seems to us should deserve a review of traffic and its impact on the neighbors. There's been some mitigation of that, you know, with the on campus housing, but that also is only a partial mitigation. In fact, may even exacerbate the situation. We're all for it, we want to see the growth, we think it's the right idea, but these are concerns that really haven't been addressed. And then finally, I'd like to point out to the, the, the commission, the nice ribbon that Josh was showing on that view, which is fifty thirty S, uh, old city height. It strikes us that that has a potential of allowing the amassing of five story properties along Ashley, uh, along Rutledge that are across the street from, again, residential homes that are two stories in size. Some of them commercial, some of them rental, some of them still unoccupied. And if we want to give, if we want to give consideration to how our landscape looks in the city of Charleston, how this, uh, fits within a neighborhood. Uh, I think we should allow some scaling or more setback because fifty thirty S has no provision for setback from the street. None, unless I've misread the ordinance. And I think there should be some provision for setback to create some space on the street. So it's not eventually someday, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming up. Anyone else like to be heard on this? Oh, great. Again, I'm not looking for a reply, Mr. Martin, but I know you're still worth in progress on this. If you have any comments, that's great, if not, that's hope to see.
Just for the record, two sixty one Calhoun, that, the height of that parcel is not increased as part of this process. It was five stories prior to the process. It became five stories when we converted all of the height by feet to height by stories. And so that, um, that is not changing as part of this overlay.
Right, and I know the city's committed to, continued to work with that neighborhood to try to answer questions. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
You had another update for us.
Housing, so I think, uh, our commissioners, did you all have any other questions?
Mr. Jacobs, go ahead.
One thing I'd love to say, appreciate the fact that you all spent some time with the parking education and stormwater education. Because most of those issues that I read and I heard were just education, things that people don't understand the process, don't understand the nuances of the city. And so they thought that things were literally going away and being obliterated.
That's right.
And I worked at MUSC and those hinterland parkings are very much the largest parking rides of car system, Mount Pleasant.
That's correct.
Downtown and West Ashley downtown, and the average person doesn't know that. The other, I did have one question, though, under the revised draft, under permitted uses, you have the sidewalk cafes and the baked gardens and those. There was a more elaborate description in the first version. And then there was something about the portable houses, dormitories shall be permitted, and there's no housing or dormitory density limits. And that, all that verbiage just went away.
So what we did is we we simplified this because I think there was a lot of confusion caused between that. And so what we did is the structure of the first ordinance was combining things that typically aren't combined in the zoning ordinance in that fashion. So when I went back and read through how the structure of the overlay language technically works, so for example, the folly road overlay. Um, you wouldn't put it uses with lot dimensional standards, or you wouldn't put uses with density. So if you see, if you look at the section, the first section, really the permitted uses, section C, that calls out only permitted uses. When you go into, um, section D, those are hourly restrictions and limitations. That only deals with that, as well as, um, as well as the variant setback regulations. And what we pointed to is that that shall refer to MU two standards, which is a district that is adjacent to the district today. Um, and that's where the density standard would pick up from that. And so then we we've tried to put, and the parking is a separate one, demolition is the next one. So they're all now kind of sectioned out appropriately and not, there was some confusion about how they were intermingled and maybe too proposed, and so I'll take the blame on that. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. You just bulleted point them, basically, you just took out all the word, the word you weren't Smith, then you just bulleted it.
Right. All right, thank you for that. I think one last thing on MUSC, I see Mr. Helen Maclean, I just want to go for the record, last, at the meeting last month, I had called him by his brother's name. And I want to apologize to both him and his brother, because they were both mad at me.
We can understand why they'd be upset about being confused, they were both very upset.
It's broken attendance, yeah. Thank you, great, Mr. Morgan.
So I'll, I'll go through this rather quickly, so the city, um, the article recently came out about the city affordable housing strategy and the city housing strategy as a whole. And I think that that triggered, um, some people have not seen this presentation, some people have. And so, uh, we, I can go through this tonight. And then, um, I sent out a copy of the presentation, um, over the weekend to you all. This is a, as FYI, but, uh, we've been working with Bloomberg and Associates for the past, let's call it a year and a half on trying to come up with an overall housing strategy that dealt with not only market rate housing strategy, but also an affordable workforce housing strategy, because we have to have those to kind of balance this variant balance system that we're in, this crisis that we're in. And so here is kind of the the hundred page document summarized on one page. Here's what's happening. Our population has increased significantly. The AMI has doubled in the past twelve years, which is pretty remarkable. Uh, we have smaller and wealthier households, um, in the, in the post pandemic, uh, condition. Uh, Charleston was a lot different than it did pre pandemics. And and so that was a market condition, we were pushing people out, we have traffic and infrastructure as a result, there's a lot of pressure on that. Uh, and so now we have a housing goal set by this group, uh, that in the next seven years, we need to create three thousand five Uh, and so now we have a housing goal set by this group, uh, that in the next seven years, we need to create three thousand five hundred affordable homes. And that's net new. So when you do a rad program at the housing authority, uh, you can't count the existing units that are there to replace them. This is on top of what exists today at thirty five hundred. Um, and right now that's about five hundred homes a year. In the past seven years, we've been doing around sixty homes a year. So we're going to be amping up the, uh, the engine here just a little bit to get this, um, going. And so what we've done is we've been doing a, a citywide mapping study and Christopher is probably good to kind of go through this at some point for the planning mission. Because we've performed the most comprehensive mapping analysis in the city's history. Looking at everything from, uh, property that's, uh, best locations for affordable housing, capital projects in your neighborhood. All the basins from the water plan, all the stormwater projects, all the capital projects, where new parks are coming, where new roads are coming, where the light is turning differently. All these types of things and part of the effort that we're, we're kind of building up to the new transportation sales tax initiative that's coming online. And trying to figure out how we can look at community infrastructure as well as roadways. So the green belt and, um, you know, uh, you know, parks and, uh, you know, maybe some resiliency measures as well. So we went through the whole city and said, where would it be best to be located on these criteria? You can see on the right. Uh, so we weren't just making like just random decisions about the land and we scored all of these sites. And eighty five percent of the new housing units for the location were on the peninsula. Transit, transit lines, um, you know, we found property that was scalable, walkable to work centers. You know, all these types of things that we're looking at, how to traffic, uh, you know, zoning and height standards, we had some more relief there in certain areas downtown. So we came up with, um, areas that we felt like were kind of the, the areas that we wanted to focus where this new housing, affordable workforce housing would go. And we came up with these areas kind of around the west edge. As you know, that is perhaps dissolving. In terms of the foundation and the city and the foundation they partner, they've made a decision based on the overlay that you saw tonight, that they want to stay on campus. And so this, um, west edge, it kind of be more of a housing receiving zone now. Uh, the number one barrier for N U S C for talent attraction is, you can imagine, um, housing. And it's not housing for the lab tech and housing for the, the, uh, the, the, the doctor, uh, that is practicing. It's the student housing that's also a huge concern. And so looking at that, and then on the east side. There were some opportunities, one for Mount Pleasant and the low line. That's the new T O D site for the Low Country Rapid Transit. It's also the head of the low line. It's also eight twenty three Meeting Street, which is the Parks Department, which the city is kind of considered about how maybe that could be used better than storing lawnmowers. And then, uh, so that's, that's another piece. And then the other piece is on Morrison Drive. Of course, nine ninety three, nine ninety five, we're currently under contract now with the county. Uh, and that's about an eight acre parcel of land, um, and it's in a pretty good location. It does have a limo issue, but. Nonetheless, we know how to design in these zones, so we'll be fine. And then, then finally kind of coming, moving down. We have a lot of Charleston Housing Authority properties that we're looking at, and that happens in the west edge side with Gadsden Green. And then the rest of their properties are kind of in that meeting, uh, Morrison Drive corridor. We'll take a look at that. And so that we're partnering at that. And so this is our list of how we get to thirty five hundred in the next seven years. And it starts, um, and they're color coded on purpose and they're all by address point and all by unit count. Um, and this took a little bit of time to, to, to put this together, but this is, um, number one of the completed projects in point twenty four, we had a hundred seventy eight units. Sites that are under development, these are either in T R C, going through T R C, out of T R C. With permits, but not fully built out or not without, but they're not finished yet, right? So in the process, that's about a thousand units. Let's call it a thousand units today that across the city are somewhere in the process and they contain. Affordable workforce housing units typically coupled with market rate, because our goal is we want to have mixed income, typically fifty percent affordable, fifty percent market. And so those are under development on the peninsula. So then we were left with, okay, that's twelve hundred. We've got to find twenty three hundred more to go, right? So we've been looking at kind of the larger sites that we've been calling kind of the, 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 the works at the workhorse sites that can really produce a good yield. So West Edge, which we're going to talk about, that'll bring out about five hundred new affordable work cost units. Nine ninety three, nine eighty five is another five hundred. Uh, we have eight twenty three meeting here. We have, um, uh, other projects about Pleasant Street redevelopment, uh, and, and others that then that gets us about fifteen hundred more. And so then now we're at this about eight hundred, nine hundred. And so what we're asking is the Charleston Housing Authority through their rad program, coupled with a build first notice placement policy, that they would fill the gap there. Uh, in a way that we could, uh, then get to thirty five nineteen in the next seven years. So this is very doable. It's very ambitious, but it is, it is something that we felt like. That we could actually get these through the system and constructed and permitted, uh, within the, the year, the goal year. So how does this work on the map? So these are the completed project sites. They're all backed out and you'll see that the inset of West Ashley and John's Island on the right start to populate as we move forward. This is the, uh, sites under development right now. You can see where those are scattered, both on the peninsula, John's Island and West Ashley. Uh, and then next are the targeted sites. Primarily those are all on the peninsula with the exception of two, uh, in West Ashley that have been targeted. And again, those, um, you can see as they're populating the bubbles that we were looking at before, kind of the planning areas as we're moving forward. And then we put this all together. This is Charleston Housing Authority site. And we have got one more to add to this. We're going to have a few more, uh, on this, on this slide. Uh, this is the Gadsden Green, Cooper Park Court, uh, Meeting Street Manor, Ragboro. Um, and so those are the ones there. We're not doing Robert Mills Manor. We're not doing Joseph Floyd Manor. Joseph Floyd Manor is Chris Charleston County, but. That's something that is not included in this list. Put it all together and this, uh, it's so easy. Uh, and then this is, and then basically these are the thirty five nineteen units that would be constructed over time. We then took it up set forward and said, what does that look by year? What's coming online, uh, project wise? We took all the projects and showed where, and you can see they're kind of, at the end, it really starts to fill up. You know, year twenty thirty, there are thirteen hundred units in one year coming online, um, approximately. And those are those big sites that we were talking about, and it's the Charleston Housing Authority completion, because that's kind of their target date. Is around that twenty thirty for the rad program and the redevelopment sites. Um, and remember this doesn't include their replacement. So with the rad program, you replace what's existing on site. Um, so what we do is before exit, so you take what exists on site, you double that. And so that gives you the increment of new affordable, and then you double that number and that gives you the increment of the market rate on top of that. So it's sitting on top of that. So that's the path. One thing that we didn't like is that we, um, we didn't like what we were seeing being devised for like the multifamily, typical multifamily. Um, uses, um, um, buildings that you would see, um, in Charlotte, Houston, wherever that were affordable. And they were, you know, on the, even though they're on the transit line, they're probably like thirty year buildings. And we wanted to create like a hundred year buildings or two hundred year buildings. Um, and so the, he, these are the assumptions. It's mixed income typically fifty fifty. That's the, that's the goal. It's of Charleston. So when you look at it, it looks like Charleston. Um, and then the redevelopment density goal was about eighty dwelling units per acre, which if you think about it, um, uh. Where I live on, on State Street, my house is eighty nine dwelling units per acre and it's two stories. Um, and it's, you know, a smaller house, but still that's achievable in a context that looks like Charleston. And the redevelopment net available is fifty percent of the units are affordable. And the key here is that it's not, it's not a burn off restriction. It's in perpetuity. So these are in perpetuity. So we're having a lot that are starting to see burn off. Remember the first for work housing ordinance was for a place called One Hulo. And that was twenty years ago when that was created, um, uh, by, uh, by a little committee. And then, uh, we put that together and so that, uh, that was the beginning of this whole thing. That's starting to burn off now. It's been, you know, twenty years, right? And so this is, uh, the key is that, that it's a permanent, uh, deal. So on the left is what we don't want. It's kind of the, the Texas donut that you see in most, you know, multifamily. And on the right is what we want to see, um, is the Charleston block, um, and, and these varied heights and, you know, roof scape worthy of Charleston. And all these materials that, uh, look like Charleston. So we've come up with basically residential typologies. We're adding a couple more, but these are typologies that are exist today in Charleston. You can go see them. They've been built, they've been designed, and we think that if we get to a scale. Say we're creating seven thousand new units, because we have thirty five hundred times two. Seven thousand new units, that gives us an economy of scale and a lag time with the construction company and builder. That these can start, the cost of the construction, these can start to be brought down, coupled with, um, you know, maybe some modularity type approaches to construction typologies. And so these are the residences we want to use, and this is what they look like. And these all exist in town right now. So for the Charleston single, it could be a single, it could be a duplex, it could be a triplex. And, and it parks, all these units were parking at one point one per unit, uh, spaces. Or you could have a small apartment house, very, and, and the thing that's great about Charleston, you know, these are boxes, um, with accoutrements. Whether it's a piazza or whether it's shutter or whether it's a roof, a mansion roof or what have you. And so that's the, the good thing about these. And then, you know, smaller, this is a nice four pack that you may see, um, where you have, you know, four units. Uh, this is taking kind of the old CrossFit Hotel approach, and this is built today on Romney Street, uh, the middle picture there. And then the, the old school building, this is an easy day, six fifty five East Bay Street, uh, that exists today, kind of right near, uh, cigar factory, just north of that. As you're going off, uh, Morrison, this parks at grade. So none of these typologies have structured parking. The only one that's close is the last typology, which is called the pen wheel. And the pen wheel has, um, a tabletop deck that's embedded within the, the structure of the frame. So it's not pure structured parking that is costly. And then the tabletop deck is topped with a courtyard pool amenities and those types of things. And, uh, this is, this is an example of this exists also on Romney Street. And then these are kind of the precedent images of what we want to do, uh, how it should be beautiful. It should be, you know, even Robert Mills Manor, even once, even deferment is still is, uh, is, is still handsome. Uh, and maybe you need some repairs, but regardless, that's a, that's a testy, great test of how you can do this, I think. And so these are all just kind of materials we're looking at. West Edge Foundation has gone through their urban master plan and, and then trying to apply what's left at West Edge, the two big parking lots at the north. Uh, the city own parcel, and if we were to take this application, what could we get? Uh, and that's a thousand units total, five hundred of which will be affordable. And then if we look about, if this could become the build the first strategy where all of Gadsden Green moves here. And then you add Gadsden Green, then what does that look like? And so that becomes, that's the Gadsden Green. Uh, but it's what really interesting at the end of the day, when you look at, when you look at this as a, a building footprint and the fabric of, uh. And the fabric of the neighborhood, it looks like the neighborhood's adjacent in terms of footprint size. And we even scaled down, uh, the Gadsden Green for heights as we're going closer to more residential fabric. Um, so this is an area of what that, uh, would look like today. There's even a lake that perhaps could be somewhat like Chloe Lake. And also be a stormwater kind of resiliency, uh, approach as well. Three sixty, uh, the Joe to make that, you know, call it Tru's Park type approach in Atlanta. And, um, and so that's, uh, something that we're looking at and then improvements to Virgil Bank Park and what have you. So nine ninety three, we have a plan for that. That's using the same technologies we've master planned that out. So these are not fake numbers that we're just throwing out onto sites. These are actually the design, heavily designed, uh, from a site finding standpoint. Mount Pleasant Street, this is a whole rethinking of where the low line meets the, the, the bus rapid transit facility. So the bus rapid transit facility is in blue, um, we're looking at Mount Pleasant Street running. It was kind of a north to south, uh, alignment on plan. And then, um, thinking about how the low line, so the Parks Department building is this little brown building. Yep, right there. Right there is the Parks Building, and that's of course has to be preserved, but then using all the property around that, it's a big piece of property when you take away. All the maintenance and the storage and what have you. So that's looking at that piece of property and then the Charleston Housing Authority. These are the properties we've been partnering with them. We're going back to them at their next board meeting with an approach of how we can work together. Um, they have different funding streams and typically we would be, uh, thinking about, but there's also. Everything from vouchers through revolving loan funds, we started calling today with a, a different bank. And so there's things that are coming together. And so that in eight minutes is, uh, the answer to the affordable housing strategy.
So, Martin, very aggressive and very positive, and, uh, we appreciate a lot of good information.
So this is really important, just really quickly. So, so the second one is no displacement. And that is the number, like one of the number one principles is that no one's leaving and going to, um, summer. But, um, they're staying next door to their neighborhood, like for example, Gadsden Green, going to West Edge. When it's done, you go back to New Gadsden Green. Nine ninety three, you go from Meeting Street Manor, you go over to nine ninety three, then you go back. So that's the, that's the whole approach of how the city can help the housing authority with the no displacement, um, as well. And then, um, and then the city is putting, you know, a lot of, you know, tokens into this game with, you know. The purchase price on nine ninety three is thirty million dollars. Um, Mark, you know, Meeting Street, eight point three, that staff would go to the new city ops building, um, on Herbert Street. It's being built. Uh, which is a beautiful building and then, uh, West Edge is kind of shifting that focus from medical tech to now a housing, infill housing that is. Very adjacent to the university, the overlay zone and those types of things. So that's kind of where, so Charlie, I apologize. I just want to go last bit in and that's the update.
I have a question.
Yeah.
All of these units that you're discussing, um, are there any percentages of ownership versus rental or the ability to have ownership?
So we're working through that, um, in terms of what the demand, so the worst, the worst look, as you know, and I don't think that would happen necessarily in Charleston, but it may. But the worst look of affordable housing is not occupied. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're building not only to a for sale for rent target, but an A M I target. Because in some of these neighborhoods, people say, oh, no, no, this is the target that what will absorb is eighty percent. Well, it's not. It's actually a hundred percent or it's thirty percent, you know? So we want to make sure that we're targeting, and all these neighborhoods vary greatly in terms of the A M I and, and whether or not a home person, you know, uh. Purchase or rental would be more appropriate within, uh, the context of the, you know, the, the wage limitations for families of one, two, three. What are the typical family sizes? That's another thing that's interesting about this exercise. It's interesting to see what's living in the Charleston Housing Authority because it's not maybe what you think, uh, would be in terms of family size. And so we're going through that exercise with, uh, a very data driven Bloomberg approach from that. So that we're not building something that will not immediately be absorbed, not only in the beginning, but viable to be. And that's why these, these residences are also buildings that learn over time, like a good Charleston building where it may be. You know, a building on meeting, lower meeting street that was once a mansion that becomes three flats and then it goes back to two flats. And then, so all these buildings can do that type of thing as opposed to just a standard multifamily approach that's very static and very one day.
Those kind of like market, I mean, you know, at, at a building or, uh, a group of buildings, you, you know, some would be market. Rent, some would be, uh, market rate.
Right. And we can mix it within the building. Right.
And in that way it makes it a little bit more feasible, um, but, but to not, to not have anything that allows ownership, I think is, is.
Absolutely. It's, it's, that is definitely on the table. It's just a matter of what the scale is going to look like.
It's hard to do.
It's, it's really tricky. It's very tricky. And then the other part of this, it's important, it's come up a lot. When we build these neighborhoods, we're trying to understand that we're building, um, now I'm in rezonings, I think. Um, so we're trying to make sure that we're building into these places that we create that. Um, are either taking advantage of existing amenities. So here like Singleton Park is a great park space. So maybe we don't need a park as part of the overall redesign. But here what you don't see is we have about fifty thousand square feet of non residential space that's at the ground floor of these, some of these buildings. So we could have, you know, a market, we could have, um, Grotham Carolina, we could, we could bring other different things in. We could have, uh, a nonprofit center workplaces. We could have training for, you know, residents, uh, for, you know, uh, all these different types of things. So we're looking at kind of the, making sure that we're making the best use of our land so that we're not over green spacing it. If we've got enough green space there already. I mean, in the case of West Edge, it's kind of a no brainer because there is a lot of park space in this area. So we felt like we didn't need to create a lot of park space, um, as part of this, because we've got, you know. Two fields, a park and all these types of things. So, but we're, we're taking that into account too Sunday, just because that's also part of the. You want to have something that's complementary with an E to the residences and especially where we're building at that density.
Well, I wanted to think about that in reference to our rezoning rewrite, because, you know, we might have to come up with a new lot sizes and then we have small, single family.
There's a new overlay zone coming.
I mean, without even really even being an overlay, I guess, may have to do it, but I mean, to have smaller lots, you know, I'm not talking about tiny houses. I'm talking about detached.
Yeah.
Smaller lot.
Sure.
I mean, and, and I don't even know if it's even ever considered. I mean, and and I don't even know if it's even ever considered to even have a parcel where you condo detached homes.
Sure.
I mean, you know, just to kind of thinking out of the box, um, you know, to try to be able to allow individual detached homes for people without large lots and have a little bit of joint green space in between the two.
I mean, we're even going to the point right now, we're trying to remove as many barriers as possible. So like, we're already partnering with private, because that city doesn't want to be a real estate, you know, housing developer, right? So we get to partner. We want to make it attractive. And so one of the things I've been kicking around right now is that uh, having pre, having the sites all have a stormwater approval.
Easier.
Yeah, all the barriers are gone.
Yeah.
All the, all the typologies are pre-approved by V A R. So you can use them a- as you want. And and it's a site land review at staff level, that sort of thing, right? Because you're, we're building Charleston, we're not building something that's not Charleston. And then so removing the stormwater um and thinking about other things, because I think the things that we've tried to do in the past, um, this is just my personal opinion, is that it's not enough. Um, and so we need to kind of kick it into the next year of this. And where we see lot, like the hairy line, uh, we can remove that line. And you don't have to go through that line as part of the process because we've already taken, we've already pre-entitled even more so.
That's how it's people to give ball.
Thank you, Dan. Right, right.
Ms. Harrison, you got it.
I have a question, because I know you mentioned AMI. And, you know, most of us understand with that, how that formula is derived from average, average median income. However, even though average median income within the Berkeley County, DeChester area is, is one thing, they think of City of Charleston, Nenzola. And, you know, I've always noticed that the cost of building is always going to be consistently the same. Rather than it's market rate or affordable. But at the same time, um, I was really surprised when you said that wages have, I mean, wages have increased, but but for a single, for single occupancy and being able to rent or afford something in the city, it's still, there's still a return in that. So I guess, so the two things is, are we going to adjust the way we calculate AMI?
So, so we're going to be looking at it uh primarily by, I was looking at a census tract instead of by NSA. And so that's a, it's a big uh thing. It's, it's, it's challenging. So going back to Sunday's comment about, you know, like, what are we building? Is part of that equation of how we like think about AMI, right? And so we want to make sure that this is what it really is. And this is what they really want and and what will occupy and absorb in market. So those are the things that we're going through right now. And it's um, uh, uh, I guess luckily I like math and so that's a good thing. But uh, it's a, it's a, it's a very detailed analysis of a census tract because we want to boil this down to where it's really being responsive to neighborhood based census tract. And that's about the best type of data you can get, the finest screen and really hire someone to literally like, you know, type thing and take the survey, um, which, you know, the census does. And so um, so that's, that's, that's kind of what we're thinking of is this, this is going to be kind of a totally different
Right.
approach to this. Um, that is.
Where it's not just blanket eighty or eighty percent or twenty.
As spoke as you can get.
All right, so, Mr. Say.
I have a uh, two, two comments and then a question. Uh, first comment is, this is amazing. And uh, you know, the city staff and and this commission worked really hard on that thirty five hundred uh, unit number, if you all recall that process to get us there. Uh, and that was, I mean, that was a concept, right? It was like, this is what we need. How are we going to get there? What, how, what are the bones? How do you put the meat on those bones?
You got a rule.
Nobody really knew. It was just kind of this goal and it was a laudable goal and it was a necessary process. But this takes it to the, to the next level, to the nth level in Josh's terminology.
Right.
And so this is fantastic. And I'm, I'm super excited about it. And the, and as you said, I mean, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be super hard, but it is doable.
And and everything we're doing is making it more doable and and more, more reality. You know, we, the, all of these sites, I mean, this is a, this is a list of sites of probably five hundred sites that were boiled down. So this was like, you know, getting down to a very, and and testing them with pen and paper with, you know, you know, drafting tables and that sort of thing. And so we know that this works. We know it fits. We know it is the height that is of Charleston. I mean, most of the height here, we're at like three to four stories. So this is not, this is not scary, right? Um, you know, and so that's, you know, that's, that's a big thing. And that was one of our rules. We said, and and what that does is we're not in a mid-rise building code. We're not in an elevator in the building, all these sorts of things, because we had to take all this into account. We had to get very creative about how we went through that. But we, we really wanted something that you, you know, like two hundred years from now, it still looks like trust.
So that, that was my first comment.
And it's going to be expensive.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, and that's actually where I'm headed.
I have a problem.
And 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 so my next, my next comment was, we've gone from the what are we going to do?
Yeah.
Do now we're moving into the how are we going to do it? And and this is a policymaking body. Uh, you know, we set the zoning and then, you know, the private sector are working with city staff actually implement all this stuff.
Right.
Uh, but I know this commission is highly interested in this.
Great.
And for any to all, have a so.
This, and so this is my question. Uh, and I came in here thinking about this. Uh, you know, when we passed the fee and lieu ordinance, I don't know how long ago that was. Four, five, six, maybe nine years ago. I can't even remember. It all runs together now.
Longer than that.
But one of the things we said was we were going to continually come back and review that. And I, in the context of this, and how is this ambitious thing going to get done? I would like to ask if we could get an update on that to see, you know, and and in the content and and not just it's working, it's not working, but how is it going to either hinder or help this process?
We'll have that for you next month. I will say, just knowing where the fee and lieu comes from, then as you noticed, there are a lot fewer construction, is it dropping?
Yeah.
I mean, the fee and lieu stuff has dropped considerably.
That's right.
But there are still some that are coming, but we'll give you some updates, but uh, kind of year by year type thing.
Excellent. And 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 I will say too that um, unfortunately, I, I can tell you how the story ends. The uh, the fee and lieu that's probably been collected to date is a drop.
So drop in the bottom.
Of what we need here. Um, but, you know, every little bit helps, right? And so, but, but that's, but the, but we're not, we're not, that's not allowed in this program.
Okay.
Feeling there is not allowed. This is.
This is stuff, this is units.
This is built, right, but occupy people, residents.
And and that's, and that's why I bring this up is that now is always my worry about this is, you know, it's nice to have dollars in the bank, but it's better to have units on the ground. And that's uh, and that's kind of why I'd like us to.
Right. And I think, I think, um, you know, that's, and that's the case with a lot of that fee and loose stuff. If you're not proactive about, I mean, you know, what really is the city going to do with a big bank account for housing?
Yeah.
Where there's no power.
If there's, we need housing, you know, that's. Right, okay. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's a thing. And so um, so anyway.
No, and Mr. Mr. Morgan is going to give us more details on Mr. Morton next month. Okay.
We all, it, um, I mean, in my mind, like school boards and 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 properties and and empty areas that are not being utilized now.
All school district property, all hospitals, all institutions, all parks, all everything in the whole county. We analyze.
Which leads into my question.
Yes.
When we, we um approved the part for the ethics now, it was under a different sponsorship with a different type of style. With huge height, like twelve stories out here and a lot of affordable housing. I know it's changed ownership. I noticed that it didn't come up on your evaluation here. And considering that's sitting at five twenty six and the site per the largest input part of our into the city.
Stay tuned.
And 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 we're putting a lot of emergency out there that needs an affordable house.
Stay tuned.
Good, because I just hope that when you say we need private partners.
But these are the ones that we know need uh, an another party to come in.
Well, that's, that's, I heard you say we need private partners. It feels like we need to go back to those new owners and get back into that development, right? Because it's from where it sits from. And we gave it height and we gave twelve stories.
Good one.
Very recent one. And the other comment I have is um, how will market rate coming online influence all of this? Because just recently it said five thousand houses are coming in.
Right.
Will that start from all of this?
Yeah, I mean, the big, one of the premises of the Bloomberg, we had focused on this. So there's a market rate story that um, we not, we don't only, only need, we need or well, you know, not on market rate, under market rate. The, the more market rate starts to.
I just wondered how that.
Brings some equilibrium of it overall. The, right now, the system is so out of whack. And so that also helps. But, but a lot of people, that's not as um, uh, yes.
And the last, the last um thing I mentioned, which I brought to the attention of the chair is um, in this new bill, federal government, there's been maybe a reassignment of opportunities zones. And I was sort of pretty good opportunities zones on the neck, which got us into any two and any one housing with incentives. Is the mayor's office working with the situation for?
So we've already met with Todd, we've already met um, also with um, the administration in terms of new market tax credits, because that's going to be reshaped and reformed to where it actually is um, more user friendly um, than it ever has been. And so we're monitoring all of that constantly of what's going out. And then, you know, uh, and then we've got the transportation sales tax. And we, we went to Columbia last year with an amendment to the transportation sales tax that if, if communities want to to have part of their monies go to housing, because we felt like housing and transportation were linked. Um, that that would be allowed, but that was swiftly struck down, um, particularly by, uh, I think some some of the new upstate. And so that uh. Nothing, I'm just saying that I think that's, it's not happening. So, so we were trying to link that, you know, because that was something that made sense if we could build more housing, plus we didn't.
They don't want anything to make sense.
Roads and that thing. And so, so we're looking at everything, you know, we, like, I was on the phone today with the, the nation's largest revolving fund for housing. And so we're, I mean, anything, you know, we're, we're all ears, we're partnering. There are a lot of institutional partners that need housing, like in the U C, for example, they could be a partner for, you know, the housing type of thing. So we're looking at, we're not turning anyone away. So if you know of anything or think of anything, uh, it's an open door. All right, we want to, any other quick comments? Sorry if that ran over.
No, no. Great, Mr. Morgan. Thanks. So again, a lot of aggressive and very positive information. Let us know what we can do to help you.
And you haven't seen the battery extension yet.
Well.
I'm just starting to know that you like half and that we're going to be working with you on the map.
Yeah.
No, thank.
Yes, all right. Thank you all very much. So thank you.
Thank you for being here. I'm going to make more on the agenda and uh, next I know the general subdivision. It's uh, Atlantic three Thomas twenty eight fifteen, Kelly Fair Road, King Holland T M F two seven one, zero 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 two one six Tom. Uh, seven point three oh, Baker's, first concept approval for road locations, City of Charleston and the Southwood. Thank you.
So this one is going to be a little different than what we usually see. So and the applicant is looking for is requesting um subdivision of a seven, about seven point three acre parcel to create a right of way um, where there's an existing access east. So to orient to that, there's Clements Ferry Road and Spotsman Drive. So as you can see in there, you can see the
There's no department.
Um, there's a, the I, the easement already existing. So the, the proposal is to convert that into the subdivided, into convert it into a public right of way that will be dedicated to the city up to a portion of um, for the bridge that is existing in there. Um, the proposed right of way will be improved to comply with city standards as part of a future multi-family residential project that um, just, if you hear the news, it will not require planning commission approval. So yay. Um, the property is own gathering place and be surrounded by commercial uses. Let's see what else here. Those are, it's in the, well, we've had it. Okay, so sir, so here's the um, the concept plan for you. Again, here's the right of way. And here is the procedural uh parcel that will be um, multi-family, but that is in the future. Um, I mean, not far future, but you know, near future. Um, so in the proximity, in the vicinity, we have uh parcels that are zone both commercial and residential. And we have commercial uses um on the other side of the parcel here, beyond that parcel. Um, this is again, is a concept plan. If, we will have to come back to T R C for, for the night plot to create the parcels and for road construction to do the improvements. Um, it will have to meet all the requirements for uh us dictated by the city code, including the stormwater design standards manual. And it will be approved only if they are found to meet all the necessary requirements. City's uh, T R C has reviewed and approved the concept plan for compliance with city standards and the staff recommendation is.
Thank you, Zach. Look at this. Go on up, sir. Thanks for being with us tonight.
My name is Chris Donato. I'm a side cast, the representative of the owner. I mean, as usual, Anna does amazing job. I don't really have anything to add, but I wanted to be here if there was any questions or if there's anything I could just put.
Great, thank you. And your grandfather was Dr. Donato, right? We talked about that.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Chris Don, I have all this gray hair now.
Yeah. I mean, he was a wonderful man, anyway. Uh, anyone like to be heard on this item? It's not that a closed up aspect of this. Uh, commission members, questions, comments? Move approval, great. Again, Mr. Bailey would give us a talk.
It's all right.
Voted by Mr. LaSagne, said second.
Oh, second.
Second, my Mr. Jacob, who has questions, comments, all in favor of voting, take it by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? You in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight favorite number of votes. Thank you. Orders, amendment, uh, request to put a man in section fifty four, act two oh eight, fifty four, eighty seven, twenty five, wording. Definitely contains a short term rental. I'm going to clarify terms, supplemental, and view criteria penalties. Mr. Morgan.
Or, and um, yeah, sir, there's our, it's the row, ours are, is going to talk about this. And this is not, you know, changing the way our short terminals really work, but this is making it work more efficiently within the context of the, the, the premises that have been established over the years. And Jason works with these every day, day in and day out. So he is the right person to tell you all about this.
Good to have you, sir. Thank you for having me. First of all, I love getting Zara on my card. And this, this great, which is for space farm.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So when you're looking at these, a majority of these, I believe y'all got a handout of these. There's a lot of underlining, like Christopher said, there aren't actually that many changes at all. This is just clarification and cleanup of our existing ordinance. So the ordinance is broken up into two sections. One of them is the overlay zone and the residential. We will begin real quick with an overview of what we've done with respect to y'all's time and everyone's desire to hear me go along about short term rentals.
I love it.
So we um, beginning here, we took these definitions that were already existing in the zoning ordinance. They were just at the beginning of the ordinance and we just put them in the beginning of the, here, this, because most people don't review the entire ordinance when they're looking for short term rental is very specific. So again, we didn't add anything new here. Um, let's see. The last you're good, but not that good. Um, we clarified the number of overnight guests. We've always taken it from the building code to say one family or four unrelated adults. The only thing we've changed to this is we've said no more than two adults per bed. We'll still have the same overall limit, but what we're trying here, this was a recommendation of one of the neighborhood councils. They were trying to see if we could have less bachelorette party, have parties in some of these. Uh, let's see here. The, the next page, this is primarily, there isn't any changes here. This is just basically listing what we do, the process, the application process, what we require. Um, let's see, now David's owner, yeah, none of this is anything new. This is how we've always operated. It, it's just something that we wanted to put into payment to, for any new applicants. Um, I did add the part about applications that have had no applicant required activity for ninety days would be voided or would be subject to be avoided. Uh, wanted to make sure that it was just applicant required that way in case something happened. And I had slipped by on something or I was on vacation, that the clock wasn't running against him for something that was my responsibility. But I figure after three months, if you haven't done what we're requiring you to do, we can void the permit. The fire marshal has a very. We can void the permit, the fire marshal has a varying, a very similar one, I believe their time scale is a hundred and eighty days. The other, well, really one of the few changes that we did make to this or addition is that we're gonna request or require. Applicants to submit a list or documentation of all of the platforms that they're planning on using. For advertising the short term rental, so it's nothing terribly arguable, it's just a part, it's gonna be a part on the application, just a list. What you're advertising, so if it's Airbnb, VRBO, that's great, it's mostly for enforcement. Or that way the enforcement gentleman can keep track of what's being advertised, because what we run into sometimes is. One listing on one will say one thing, and then another listing will be showing something else.
I was gonna ask, so that covers, so for instance, like if the company, so if it's an independent company, right? That will, that submitting their applications. We don't have something that covers the company that, all the, all the, all the houses that, or units that they're also listing. On their own individual.
We, yeah, we don't have anything on that, we're, we're just going by case by case basis, uh, which, which platforms will this property be advertised on? We think that might also help in case there's another lawsuit, like with Airbnb, where we have a list of, okay. You were advertising so many properties, or we can find that you've been advertising so many properties, and would probably help with litigation or settlement dispersion. Um, the final change on this would be, again, not really a change, but just kind of, um. Under the penalties. The, any, any section or violation of the section has always been subject to revocation by the zoning administrator. Uh, what we did at the behest of the legal department was, we added a section here that says. If you've had a certain number of violations within a calendar year upon convictions. That your permit will be revoked, again, we're not taking away from the zoning administrator's authority to revoke on anything, but. We're just wanting to kind of show and give a definitive, if you're a habitual offender this many times, you will. Be revoked. All right, res- on the residential short term rental side, it's much the same, um, the definitions or the addition. Uh, we're defining how we define subordinate use. Um, it's always been a residential short term rental has always had to be. An incidental or subordinate use to the main use of the property, which is the primary residence. But we never defined how we determine subordinate use, and so. After some appeals to the B Z A C recently, we won the appeals, but we felt that we needed to kind of articulate it a little bit clearer. On that. We kind of go into defining what we will accept as a bedroom. I've run into a lot of instances where people wanted to find everything as a bedroom, a closet, a nook, a den, a living room, an attic. We just never, have never had a clear definition of what was a bedroom, so we just wanted to go into that a little bit. Um, drawing off of the fire code, the building code, such as that. Again, we go into defining what a permanent structure will be accepted and what won't be. R Vs, campers, yurts, tents, and this goes back to. Requests we've had or applications we've had where people have wanted to short term rent a tent or use the tent as their primary residence on paper. And rent their main house.
By the way, get around, man.
They, they do, they dirt, always have to build a better mousetrap. We just made the language between the three sections a little bit more consistent, so. We wanted to make sure that the subordinate or accessory use was used in all of them. The way it has been since twenty eighteen, we have an overarching. List of, this is the requirements for all three categories, and then it breaks off into the individual category requirements. But it didn't say accessory use in all three categories, so we've had some people challenge based off that. Uh, we've won, but again, we just wanted to eliminate all doubt, really. Um, no changes to that page. Again, just the, um. Just the change in the defining what will get your permit revoked after so many revocations. Or, I apologize, some convictions. Clarification in language, like I said, that's really of all of our changes, not many actual changes, just mostly. Clean up, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
My question. Seen this before, I had never seen it, and I was at a house, and a party bus actually backed into. A home, and I thought it was just, they were picking up people to go to a wedding, and. But they didn't, they parked underneath the house, and they actually kept. About ten people on that party bus as occupants for a weekend. Do you have, have you seen that?
I, I have run into instances where people wanted to use different vehicles, uh, like I said, RVs, campers, tents, yurts, um. Nooks, just nothing, vans, there were a couple of vans, somebody wanted to use it just to couch, um. It's, uh.
Well, this was outside, I mean, it was just, you know, some of the property.
Pulled the bus up, yes, ma'am, like I said, that's. If someone will pay for it, they'll sell it.
Great, any other, is he, is, and when you're gonna, anyone in the public like to be heard on this? Yes, sir, come on up. Glad you sat with us, too.
Yeah, I'm actually here for this agenda, I, I was listening in, so if you have.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, my name's Colin Culver.
Where you live?
I live forty-one Berry Street down there. If you have a four bedroom house and a pullout couch, you'll, you'll only be able to list it as an eight bedroom unit, not a ten bedroom unit, based on the pullout couch in the living room.
Four bed, four bedroom, we count the number of bedrooms.
Per bedroom is what you're saying, though?
Two adults.
Two adults per bedroom.
We don't have any provisions that limit the kids, um, so. You still have the maximum occupancy of one family or four unrelated adults. But we, we were trying to do was avoid situations where people said, yes, all of these people are my family, and I, I'm not. Bushes with the twenty-three and me kit, and, but, we did wanna limit that, you know, we're not gonna have. Five people in one bedroom, just trying to clean up a little bit of that one.
And then, um, on the residential S D R part, you mentioned that there's a primary and a subordinate house. So if there, I mean, from like a V A R standard, I, I understand what the primary house looks like, even the A D U and that. The homeowner would not be able to live in the A D U and rent the larger front house out, is that what?
That's correct, but it's that way now, it's just, we never, that's the way we determine it now, it's just we've never had it pinned to paper on that.
Okay.
And like I said, we've had some people that have bought properties that. Were, believed they had a firm grasp of our ordinance and didn't bother to really check with us. And they jumped up on this great plan only for me to have to shut them down. And it's always uncomfortable telling someone who spent a million and a half dollars that, no, you can't do what you wanna do with this one.
No, I get that, that makes sense, and then the last thing is the number of violations, and when. You would get your license revoked, and, and the only thing I would request is, is that there's some sort of cure period if someone is doing something. You know, obviously, we always intend to do everything the way we're supposed to be doing it, but it would be awful if, say, a management company. Twenty properties and they have one issue that they didn't understand the rules on, and they had twenty citations for all twenty of the properties. And lost their, of license.
So I may have misspoke, I, I may have said violations, I should have said convictions, so it would be a certain number of convictions.
Per, per, per property?
Yes, sir, so if you have, yeah, if you have eighty-nine Bull Street for just a number, you get convicted. Four times in one calendar year for violations, upon the fourth conviction, that's when you automatically.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, let me just say, anyone, I know there's not anyone else.
One question I did have is regarding. Um, the renewal process, right, if you're going through the renewal process. And your license is, expires during the renewal process, so you've got inspection, you've got you on the side of the fence. But yet you have advertised during your, your licensed period, and someone is renting. You know. Has reserved their unit months in advance. Have we accounted for that type of, of, of viol-? Is, is it a violation or not a violation, and I'm asking you to make that opinion call, but have we accounted for rent, the renting of a unit? During that approval period, that renewal period?
We do not limit how early you can submit a renewal application, so if you think that, you know, you just wanna be sure. I usually tell people a month, month and a half, just to make sure that a management company hasn't dropped thirty applications on me ahead of you. But we don't have anything to answer your question directly, we don't have anything for that directly. But I do usually advise people month, month and a half out, and I will, I will have you through, no problem.
Okay. Thank you, uh, again, commission members, questions, comments, motions, Mr. Jacob?
Um, appreciate all the information, and I'm glad y'all are working on cleaning up short term rental. But since we did not have the privilege of seeing this information until tonight, I would like for, to make a motion that we defer the vote. Until the next meeting, since it's not critical, so that we have time just to take in what you said. And review, and just make sure that we don't have any further questions, since we didn't get the opportunity to actually physically read this.
We're gonna get you back next month.
Oh, well, absolutely, sounds like fun, um, and if you have any questions between now and then, feel free to reach out to me, I'll be happy to clear up anything I can.
Any other questions or comments, again, we appreciate your work. So, uh, there's a motion, my man Jacob, to defer till next month on this, and we get to see the czar back again. Thank you, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And this is a, a, a cleanup, because we've essentially been using the G I S for a number of years, because we have very good. Uh, G I S department and very good info in the G I S system, but we had never updated the zoning ordinance to say that the G I S was the. Definitive word, um, and we're fully confident, have been for years and years about our G I S being the definitive. Delinator of boundaries and things like that, so it's just a cleanup for that.
Thank you, would anyone like to be heard on this item? Oh, I'm sorry, come on, I apologize, come on up. Just for the record, your name and address again.
So, I'm just curious, when there is a zoning division, if we're relying on G I S, there's that waiver that comes up as soon as you click it. That says, this isn't a reliable source, you know, the city has to make a call, I'm assuming that waiver is gonna be removed from the G I S maps?
And I think that that waiver shows on maps that the public can get access to, that's not on city internal G I S maps. And that's what we use when we are, you know, making decisions about, you know, where, what the zoning is on a visa property, that kind of thing. That waiver has to be there because folks are accessing our systems from outside the city boundaries.
Okay, and, uh, and the scale on that map is accurate enough to depict exactly where, say, a height district lines.
Yes, and we have the ability through the system to measure things and all that, absolutely.
Okay, so if we need to figure out how, uh, where a height district is divided, we would be able to reach out to. The city architect or, uh.
You know, G I S folks will have it, and our planning folks have it.
All right.
Thank you for coming again, sir.
That's not under just the G I S dot Charleston, Baggs, South Carolina, that, dot go.
Um, I mean, you're still gonna get better response by calling, contacting us.
Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
So that, so I understand what he's talking about, when it doesn't have, but like those properties that might have, um. It would help those properties, so like, for instance, I have a piece of property that has two zoning. And I had to plot it out and recorded, but because I record, because I recorded the flat, yes, G I S has mapped my flat. So therefore, I wouldn't have a, any issue, okay?
Great, motion by Miss Lam, just second by Mr. LaSagne, all in favor, saying aye. You in opposition? They favor, not opposed, great, thank you.
Excuse myself.
But I know you have some family who, thank you, Mr. Verso, thank you for your input and questions. We're gonna go to zone, now, actually, we've, number, number one and number three is deferred. So I'm assuming we can take two and four together, is that correct?
Uh, well, four is a whole bunch of stuff, so maybe let's take, uh, two first.
Okay, two, twelve, thirty-five, one, Wisteria Road, E M S three five one one two oh oh, one one oh, one one four acres. And it's, uh, the question, it's our two, is our four in the county, Mr. Morgan?
This is off Wisteria Road, it was our four in the county, as you can see on this, everything that's in the city is in white on this map. And, uh, this would come in the city, it's S R two, based on its lot size, and here's an image of the property.
Great, anyone like to be heard on this, not? Miss Lamson?
Motion for approval?
Oh, Miss Harrison, thank you. Miss Harrison, lose approval, saying seconds, all in favor, signal saying aye, you in opposition, that's seven in favor, not opposed. Number four, I'm not gonna read all of these addresses, which is say number four, which was given to us in the document, uh, on. Terracotta Drive, and, and Ironstone, and Amisist Alley, and Taylor Street, and I'm not gonna read all the tax map numbers. Request zoning, single family, S R two. It was our four in the county, Mr. Morgan.
And these are all the pro- properties on this map that are shown in the bold, uh, black outline are coming in. Yes, yes, and this was, this is also a initiative from this neighborhood, because they felt like they would get a better. Set up for, um, taxes and for services, things like that, by coming in the city. And so, um, we've got a lot of these folks that are coming in, probably more, come in over time. So, but Molly's done a fantastic job, and, uh, these would all come in based on the lot sizes, S R two.
Great, thank you, anyone like to be heard on these, I understand that the, uh, these one, the P S D, no, wait. So, I heard the P S C is giving you a tough time, is that correct?
They, these folks will no longer be customers of the public service district, and so there may be some hardship about that. But we're excited to welcome them into the city.
Well, thank you for doing your job.
True.
Appreciate it, we appreciate it, they don't like to lose the revenue, I guess they lose some tax dollars, so thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, no one like to be heard on this, commission members?
I would just like to add to that, that during council, I think he's wearing almost crown her.
Working out with the public works and all that stuff, with the annexation, do we have to annex any of them into the city?
Public works?
Yeah, I'll be in the public works. I mean, P S D, public service.
So, I mean, every month, we're annexing.
Everything we get is in the P S.
Yeah, but we do it on a voluntary basis, we try to make sure folks know, you know, what the benefits are. We don't go in and say, oh, we're gonna do an election in a neighborhood or something like that, we all work through Molly who gets them from a voluntary basis.
But I think one of our colleagues before said I emphatically, uh. Vote yes, or something like, this is an emphatic motion, yes.
I'm gonna emphatically say, you know.
emphatic most among us, so saying second, number Jacob, is that, is that an emphatic second? Any other questions, comments, all in favor of the motion, the emphatic motion? Saying I, anyone opposed to that, seven in favor, not opposed? Thank you, Molly, yeah, thank you for your work, and. We'll get you a bulletproof vest.
Molly, I would watch in action sometimes, like actually going up to homes and talking to people and see how you do it without getting shocked.
She's gotta be a salesperson, be honest, and do everything, so, that's good. Um, go knock on this, and she's already in the city, one day just had a, we'll just go to her house and say, we're knowing another city.
That was when I had.
She's got a beautiful horn.
That's when I had the pond in my yard, when, uh, Lee Benchelder said, I don't have the heart to send you this letter. I saw it calling me to tell you, when are you gonna get rid of the pond in your driveway? It's already gone.
I put, Mr. Morgan, I appreciate you putting those in the agenda, this was something I brought up, it's just bothersome to me. And I just wanted to know from city, what we can do to, I know we can't have law, but it'll be tough for this setup.
And so I think you will be very. And so I think you will be very impressed with some things that actually had come through you all a number of years ago. To help limit the locations of these uh, types of lenders. Um, and uh, we have researched it and have the codes from our current zoning ordinance, and here we go. This is all from our payday lender title loan uh, uh, section in our ordinance. But um, Amanda has done some research on this, and she might wanna come up and talk about a little bit of this. But, but there's some pretty strict regulations currently in the code that lead to a map, and she'll walk you through that map too.
So kind of going through part of the zoning code that pertains to short term lenders. Um, some of the largest um. Distinctions in the code are where they're permitted, they're only permitted as a conditional use in four different zoning districts. Um, GB, LI, HI, and UP. So after that, the, it gets a bit stricter. The proposed use has to be at least three thousand feet measured from lot line to lot line from another short term lender. Um, and that includes. Measured from lot line to lot line to any city boundary, that's another three thousand feet it has to be away from. So the short term lenders also have to be at least three hundred feet measured from, again, lot line to lot line from any church, school, or residentially zoned district. Um, that's a lot of places in the city.
Three thousand or three hundred?
Three hundred from uh, church, school, or residentially zoned district. And it has to be housed in a non-residential building of at least thirty thousand square feet. I put together a GIS map of one specific place in the city, not the entire city. Because I'm not sure that our GIS could handle it. Right, and so that's where like a large portion of short term lenders are concentrated right now. And it's a lot of non uh, legal non-conforming uses. Because coming in today, they would not be able to congregate in this way. Um, everything you're seeing in that kind of red, uh, you know, transparent. Uh, fill there is where they cannot go. Um, and this does not include any three thousand square feet away from a city boundary. And a city boundary is, you know, uh, any kind of water of the U G B, if it's not annexed into the city. So that really kind of puts strain on where they're able to be already. Um, and this is, like I said, this is just one small example. It, it's a lot of the same, um, from what I've seen throughout the city. There are definitely some places they can still go, but it seems to be an appropriate measure. Um, where they are able to locate based on what we have in the code.
So for example, I was looking over here, I didn't see um, Apollo Road. Okay, I think it's on the map, I think. But there's a, there's a lender on the corner of Apollo Road, the boss from the Ashley River Baptist Church.
Okay.
So if that's a non-conforming use, that somebody came in. And, and, and went away from money lending, they could not go back to money lending, is what you're saying.
I think that since we don't.
Money lending, all the one, that's what you call it, what you say.
Non-depository credit institution.
Right, and Phil might be able to speak to this, but because we didn't have a sunset. Um, when this came about on it, I think that if. They leave the, the space that they're in, a short term lender, another one. Can come in if it's the same use.
Situation, grandfather.
Because it sits right behind that neighborhood of Carolina Terrace, it's just right across from Asher.
Yeah, 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 unfortunately, there was no, there was no sunset on it, so within a three year time period, they could.
Could be no more on Savannah Highway.
No, no, not, well, another one, no, a new short term lender could not happen in this area.
These are all in compliance with the current law laws.
The, the, the ones that are currently there are, can be either legal non-conforming, most of them are legal non-conforming.
So, but Charles, I thought your issue was the usurious type of pay here, buy here, car lender.
It, it is, but that's what these people are, that's what, again, the non-deposit, they fall into that category.
So payday lend, so paid, so car, car dealership.
Car title company.
So you're not talking about the car dealership that's a buy here, pay here car dealership, okay.
Talk about title loan companies.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, and uh.
I thought that's, I thought you were talking about the, the buy here, pay here.
A majority of the ones that are currently, we have in the city are legal non-conforming.
Okay.
Um, so.
And again, is there anything we can do to make it more difficult for these folks?
Well, so I put together kind of, I think, yes and no. Um, I put together kind of a page or two of uh, similar, you know, southern. Municipalities around and what they're doing about it. The most extreme version of this I found is in Savannah where payday lenders are illegal, but it is a state of Georgia thing. And the state of Georgia regulates title loans and payday lenders. The actual Savannah, Georgia, the municipality does not have anything in their code referencing it. So I think from a state level, we could potentially get there.
Yeah, the problem is the state's drive, the state is, there's been issues coming for the state and Senator uh.
It comes from Charleston.
They have strong laws.
I mean, potentially, there's room to look at, um, you know, state laws and see what we could do. But comparatively, Greenville has, they might have copied ours because they have something very similar.
Any recommendations, again, that this is just me personally, any recommendations? To make it more difficult for these people to operate or to, that we can do from a city standpoint. I know we can't change state law. Then I'm gonna change state law, unfortunately, Senator Massey, they're getting less money from these folks, so.
Wouldn't it just be, I don't know if it falls within our orbit, because it would not just, it's not a zoning issue, it's probably more on the side of an, of a. Of a policing issue. So like, for instance, in the state ordinance, there's like with the non-depository. Where your pay here payday, pay here lender, right? You could charge whatever the percentage, whatever the interest rate is. So I guess the question is, is number one, are they displaying their interest rates, right? So I think that's, I think the question is, is how, how do you, either we can sit there and regulate, I potentially. What that maximum could possibly be within our own boundaries, or we're enforcing. What the vi- if they're violating the, the. Almost as if like your labor laws are posting, the postings of your labor laws, right? So I wonder if that's a different mechanism.
I don't know that the city can determine, I guess, when state law says something, how much they could charge and an interest rate.
Yeah, I don't know that that's something we can regulate.
Right, well, but I think you, but it's required for them to post it. That's what I'm saying, is, is.
Are they meeting the, the, the state regulations to the letter of the law? That would be.
I hear you, and I wish it was with the state team, so. Anyway. Any other recommendations you would have, we can, that we can look at?
This is just one area of the ci- city, and we can provide you all some other maps of other parts of the city, but it's pretty limiting. If you, this, this code that we have, it's, we're, you know. Pleasantly surprised by saying, seeing how limiting this code is.
Um, there's, yeah, it's very all encompassing kind of, it, it definitely is, um. It, it's ver- it's very difficult. I think comparatively to other zoning codes I've looked at, um, in cities nearby. Like we are one of the stricter ones. And I, I don't know that taking it any further would be possible.
Let me ask you a question. You said if somebody closes up, then the next guy has the right to do the same thing.
Within a time period of three years, because we didn't have a sunset.
That's city.
That is.
So state has, they tell us how much we can do for vesting, I mean, for um. Yeah, vesting, in other words, how long it can last, that kind of thing. Yeah, that's, we're, we're kind of limited on that by state law.
And why couldn't we do some, I mean, I remember the issues when we had the adult. The adult uh.
Statute some payday lending are a lot like those, quite frankly. How, how stringent they are.
So, but we couldn't do a sunset provision.
I don't think we did a sunset on that one either, cause I think that, that, that gets into il- illegal situations. Um, I, I'm not aware of any of the sexually oriented businesses that were in the city. When those laws were updated, that have gone away. I think they're all still in their same locations.
We have lost one of these red dots, though. The building just red dots, it's there. Very important out to.
Oh yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we need to update that.
Okay, they demoed that building, and that's gonna, in, in exchange.
Yeah.
For something that's, God knows when Limehouse is gonna redevelop that property, but we've lost one.
Nice.
Building's gone.
Well, so then, I think then if the building has been demolished, I don't think that a short term lender could come.
Yeah, they'd have to build a whole replacement.
Basically in the same footprint.
Yeah, so that's unlikely.
And Limehouse owns that property.
See, the city's bikeway bisected it, and they worked out an agreement to realign the bikeway. So that they gave them that property, so they could redevelop it, and they demoed the building, but they haven't brought forth a redevelopment plan. I'm just telling you, we have lost one, so watch that space and make sure they don't rebuild.
Um, to kind of, I guess, wrap it in a way, like if, if you would like me to look into, to state law and see what potentially.
If you would, if that's not a big, I don't wanna take, I think you've got a lot of duties to do if you can, I appreciate it.
In my, in, if I have free time, I will look into state law.
Sorry, this is bothers me, I had a friend of mine, I've had three employees, and they were just pulling me in on this stuff, and it was such a nightmare, these guys have. And they wanted far to do it, but then he gives them money, they went to these short term lenders, these title loan companies. One guy, they showed me this stuff, I couldn't believe it, he paid back. You know, Mr. Jackson talked about this, he's paid back the loan. In two years, he's paid it back, but the total about four times, and he still owes the principal. It's just crazy, it's bizarre. And again, the state lets him do this legally. It's, it's pred- it's legal predatory.
Right, so, cause that was why I was saying, he said, cause I had to, I've litigated some of those cases in the past. And that's why I was saying, like, the issue really stems from the interest rate that they're allowed to charge is unlimited. But there's also supposed to be required posting on. That a person should be able to see, which I don't think they ever do. And then the other thing too is that, that's, I mean, I think one thing would be helpful is, uh, because it would be unfair, it's really that, should. They don't get the opportunity to enforce.
Right.
And I think if we have this municipality, whether they want to. Do something, they probably would say, please.
This guy told me, he said, I'm gonna change this slowly a little bit, you never get your title back at Title Max. He said, if they said that, it happened, it's true, he said, you never get your title back. It's upon, anyway, I'm sorry, thanks. Thank you. Any, any questions, comments? Again, this was just something I asked him to put on his agenda.
Somebody you know happened to, and as they did get their title back, is that.
They're still paying on, still paying, I mean, they're still paying on this. I told the guy, I told the boss to loan them the three thousand bucks, it's just, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but they paid. These guys have made money, and they paid back. The three thousand, they paid, they paid twelve fifteen thousand dollars back to this company in three years, and they still owe the three thousand dollars.
Or an original three thousand dollar housing.
So I told the guy, the employer, I said, you ought to loan them the money, charged him, and he reasoned, he said, forget that business, I understand, you know.
There was an email going around with some questions about.
Everybody's input, because I've asked us more, we're gonna burden him with more work and stuff like that too.
Okay, well, let me first give an update on zoning ordinance. We've got some dates and things like that. Um, so, um, you know, the team is, is working on the zoning ordinance. They are working on the section that deals with our zoning procedures. We're gonna get a draft of that for staff by the end of the month. There'll be staff comments going to them by the end of October, and there'll be a public version available of that uh, by November nineteenth. Uh, then the zoning districts themselves and uses, and again, we're gonna be updating the existing districts. Basically, for right now, has been the direction that our team has been given. Uh, those should be delivered to staff by January fourteenth. We'll get staff comments back to the clearing team by February eleventh. Public version of the zoning districts and uses by March eleventh of next year. And then the actual development standards, develop, delivered to staff by April twenty second next year. Staff comments back to the clearing team by May twentieth, and then a revised version from clearing by June tenth. And then we will um, have some public engagement after that. So that's kind of what we're looking at, uh, and there may be some public engagement after the actual zoning districts as well. Which, again, as I said, would be available after March eleventh, so looking at next spring for, for. Well, yeah, I can forward that to you. So, and then, um, I know there was a question about the Laurel Island project and the development agreement. So our financial officer got me that, cause we don't hold the development agreements ourselves and planning there in the legal world. Um, but it was the agreement, and the development agreement was for five hundred thou- I'm sorry. One hundred thousand over five years. They have already paid the city eighty thousand thus far, and the final payment was due in the next thirty six days. These funds have been utilized and earmarked for the Mulberry Pond Improvement Project handled by Harks, and that's adjacent to the West Ocean Bikeway. Um, and then, we're gonna work on.
Last twenty thousand, we'll go to that too, cause there's a lot.
I believe so. He says they've been earmarked, so, cause we spent a good bit of money on that pond. So I, I don't think this covers it. So, and we'll work on getting you vegan blue information on that. And then uh, the UP, that's a bigger discussion. Um, mobility fund, I believe it has about seven hundred fifty thousand in that. Uh, that's uh, allocated for improvements in the UP zoning area. Even as much as that might sound like, from a transportation standpoint, sometimes that doesn't do a whole lot. We've looked at ideas that might use that, or different tripping things, different intersection improvements. But we're still working on those um, ideas and um, hope to have that resolved in the next few months. Uh, how that will be used, and then um, Peninsula Plan, we are still evaluating that in light of. What we've been doing for the um. Uh, staff has been diverting a lot of attention to getting info and data together for a mapping project that related to the um. Uh, future sales tax, and where there are key priorities and things like that. And so we have had that one on hold. We'll know a little bit more about that in coming months. Um, and uh, water plan, again, it's continually being used within the TRC process. With the, the stormwater folks and all that. And I think that is the biggest updates, and then you all probably also saw the biggest update, that Tim Keen is leaving the city. And going to uh, City of Baltimore.
Well, Mr. Morgan, that's, told me that, I asked him because he. Staff know vast knowledge of the city and things we can do to change things, to pass things to city council to make the city better. Work better, and one of the things he talked about was the subdivision, we all have problems with the subdivision, that he may have some recommendations.
You just got a meeting today, because the zoning team, zoning ordinance team is working on that for their procedure section. About how that could be handled in a way that it wouldn't have to come to you all, and create that frustrating moment for the public to come to this meeting, thinking that, oh. We'll be able to make, make your input into development, so that is being, that is under review.
Maybe stopping things if infrastructure wasn't prepared for it, is that legal? What they mentioned in the paper today?
Still, I'm not exactly sure, you know, for things like a planned unit development, we, you know, have criteria in there. That require certain things within the planned unit development. I think this was just a standard rezoning that was going on, on Keen slash, and um. You know, I think it, it, it could be subject to challenge, I don't know, I think their attorneys will have to, to review it.
Five year updated comp plan.
What's, so that would be due in uh, October, November of next year, twenty sixth. So we will be preparing something for that uh, second half of next year.
Yeah, a lot of stuff we could add, that.
Yeah, yes.
Rural housing stuff.
Yes, yes, absolutely, and, and a lot of that affordable housing stuff is, you know. Dealing with a lot of the things we were looking at with Peninsula Plan too. I mean, some of that has now been kind of devised by virtue of that affordable housing strategy, so that's.
Any other, uh, comments, commission members, Thomas, more, thank you for those updates. Bottom of stuff, and again, I appreciate everybody's input on some suggestions, so. Appreciate everybody's input on some suggestions, so. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, thank you for coming.